Good evening. Welcome to the February 12th City Council Meeting. I call the meeting to order. And would everybody please join us with Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, that brings us to Proclamations. And Vice Mayor Darlington is going to present the proclamation tonight.
Whereas, reading is the foundation of education for people of all ages. And whereas, reading for enjoyment and enlightenment can enrich the lives of individuals. And whereas, the Stillwater Public Library received grants from Oklahoma Humanities and the Osage Nation Foundation, and support from the Stillwater Public Library Trust, Stillwater Public Library Friends, and Oklahoma State University Library for the ninth community-wide reading event. And whereas, the Spring 2018 Read will foster a sense of community through a shared reading experience and increase in understanding of a dark period in Oklahoma history and an appreciation of the Osage Nation. And whereas, the Stillwater Public Library is collaborating with Osage Nation partners, including the Historic Preservation Office, Wazazi Cultural Center, and Language Department. And whereas, the Stillwater Public Library is also collaborating with the Stillwater History Museum at the Sherar, Stillwater Public Schools Indian Education Program, Oklahoma State University Library, and many additional OSU and community partners. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Stillwater City Council hereby encourages all community members to participate in One Book, One Community: Killers of the Flower Moon: The Osage Murders and the Birth of the FBI, by reading and discussing this New York Times bestselling book and attending programs and exhibits during March and April culminating with a visit from the author, David Grand.
Lynda, thank you so much. This program is wonderful. And I hope everyone has seen the flyers and looked online or in the newspaper. It comes to every single program.
Thank you.
And you would like to say a word.
So, I just brought a copy of the book. I don't even know if this can... Yep, there it is seen. And we will be giving away... We've purchased so far 200 copies of the book. We'll start giving them away for free at our kickoff event, which is March 1st. We invite everyone to come to the library at 7:00 PM that evening to hear a program on the history of the Osage Nation with Dr. Andrea Hunter. She's from the Osage Historic Preservation Office. And then will those who are willing to sign up... Those who sign up to attend a community read discussion of the book will get a free copy. We do know a lot of people have already read it, they already own it, and so we have some early discussions planned for those who are anxiously ready to get right in there and read it. But we have about 24 to 25 discussions lined up and also quite a few programs. You can go to the library's website from the City of Stillwater website and you can see all of our programs that we have planned culminating April 12th with a visit from the author, David Grand. So this is the first time that we've been able to bring a New York Times bestselling author to Stillwater for the Public Library's Community Reading Series. So we thank the city and the City Council for your support.
And Lynda, this is the ninth one?
This is our ninth, yes.
So it's growing and does each one get a little bit...
Yes.
Well, congratulations.
We always think we've reached our pinnacle and then we come up with another great one and we just keep building up those numbers. And we're very excited about this partnership with the Osage Nation and several entities and people that work for the nation and we're very excited.
And bringing in a New York Times bestseller. Congratulations.
Thank you.
It's a big feat.
Yes, we're excited. Thank you all so much. Thank you for the proclamation.
Thank you.
Is that your copy? Okay.
It's more fun with a bunch of Boy Scouts, I'm just saying.
I'm really taking up a lot of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to the Consent Docket. Councilors, does anyone wish to remove an item or is there a motion?
Motion to accept the consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Please vote. And with a vote of five to zero, the consent docket is approved. That brings us to item number seven, General Orders. Mr. McNichol.
Making an appearance through the back door at this very moment is Monty Carnes, who will talk to you about the pavement management program.
Is that good timing or is that good timing?
Perfect timing.
Okay. I'm Monty Carnes, Director of Transportation and Stormwater Services. We're here to speak a little bit this evening about our recently completed pavement management inventory update that was conducted by IMS this past summer and over the fall. We're going to talk a little bit about the brief history of our pavement management program, then we're going to talk a little bit about what we learned from the assessment, and then we're going to talk about how we're going to use that information going forward. As always, feel free to ask questions as we're going through or wait till the end. We have about 447 pavement lane miles, that's both asphalt and concrete, 136 miles of sidewalk, 66 signalized intersections, and those numbers have been updated since the completion of Western from Hall of Fame to Lakeview. Still have about 30 miles of road and bike facilities, 28 bridges. We have the complete streets policy of the city, so I think it's good that we look at that from an overall standpoint. So we've got about 613 lane miles, 73% of that's in streets, 22% in sidewalks, and 5% in bicycles. Excuse me. What do we mean by pavement asset management? We match the appropriate maintenance and repair technique to the current pavement condition to obtain the greatest increase in the useful life of the pavement at the optimal cost. Graphically, this is what it looks like. If we do nothing to pavement, it will deteriorate over time in a curve something like this. At various points in that life, we have an opportunity to apply some kind of maintenance or repair to improve the quality, and then it too will deteriorate, and we can continue to do that. Now, quality and dollars are directly correlated. So as you can see, if we wait to this point to get to this point, we're going to spend more dollars to get that same quality. Likewise, if we come to here to get that same quality, we're spending more dollars. So if you add these two lines together, graphically you can see that we've spent less money to have a quality here over the period of time if we catch it at the current and at appropriate points. So that's what we try to do. What kind of techniques do we employ? We do a micro-surface overlay, sometimes called a slurry seal. That's basically liquid asphalt mixed with various additives, a very fine-grained aggregate. It's a very thin layer over the pavement. It does very, very well to seal up any cracks that we might have when we have excess pavement distress, and it affects the ride quality in a positive way in some instances. That would be this slide. Of course, we have mill and overlays, or sometimes we just overlay and put asphalt back. Sometimes we have to completely reconstruct the street, and in some instances, we just do a spot repair or full-depth repair. So what's the first thing we have to do? First thing you need to know is how much do you have of something and what's the quality? And that gives us a baseline. About 10 years ago, the council then retained infrastructure management services to conduct that baseline. Five years ago, they updated it, and just about a year ago tonight, the council authorized them to come in and perform the third assessment. In this recent assessment, council authorized a couple additional tasks to be done. One is in the pavement inventory to add deflection testing. We'll talk about the importance of that in a minute. And also, roadway asset data collection. And this is to determine what our signs are, the support for those signs, how well they're seen at night, and then also the pavement markings, and a few other trainings and a couple other things. So, terms of length, width, and calculate the square yards. In the pavement management, we tend to... The program looks at square yards versus lane miles, so that's an important number to have. We look at the traffic volume, and we base that in average daily traffic as opposed to what peak hour might be. The deflection testing or dynamic testing that we talked about before is composed of two things, deflection condition and the dynamic condition, and we'll graphically show that in a minute. And then, of course, the surface condition, which is the cracks, the distress, the rutting, and the ride quality or the roughness. Surface conditions are pretty readily evident to the traveling public. We put all that into an algorithm. You turn the crank, and down here at the bottom, you get a ranking from 10 to 100. If you want more information on how that works, I'm happy to explain it to you. Here's the deflection testing. You may have seen this past summer, a trailer being pulled behind a vehicle. This was pulled down every street in town. On the two-way streets, it was only done in one direction, multi-lane made two passes, one in each direction. They stopped at least once per block. They raised the trailer up, raised the wheels up off the trailer, and that applied about a thousand-pound load at that location where those wheels are right there. Graphically, that's shown by this arrow. Anytime you put a load on any kind of a structure, you get a deflection. The depth of that deflection tells us a lot about what's going on. Now, this is greatly exaggerated. The pavement didn't deflect that much. The amount of this deflection, the smaller it is, the better the pavement. The shape of this curve is the dynamic condition. That's the deflected condition. The shape of the curve is the dynamic condition. The more that looks like a V, the better your pavement. There is a lot of good science behind this. Probably the only one in the room that cares to go into it that deep, so we're not going to. But what I think is important for you to understand, there's decades of research and observation going all the way to the... Back to the '30s that this science is based on, so it's pretty good science. To do the surface conditions, they put a laser bar on the front of the truck. This shoots laser beams down at periodic points across the pavement. They reflect the time it takes for it to come back. That turns them, tells them the distance from an own point, so they get what the surface looks like going across the pavement, and can pick up if there's any rutting, which is what that yellow line right there would show, which indicates how much rutting there is. Those sensors can also pick up pavement distress like cracks, but it's also contingent on observation by somebody in the truck as well on the pavement distress. Then on the wheels, front and back, there are sensors that measure how the truck is moving as it's going down the road, record that, and that's what this yellow line indicates over here, and you can see a couple little hubs there, and that indicates the roughness as well.
Monty, can I stop?
Yes, ma'am.
So is that how you then define what streets then need to have the most immediate attention?
Yes, and that's what we do on the next slide.
There we go.
Good. Great timing. So then, like I said, all those go into an algorithm. You come out with a ranking. This table shows you what we do to... What technique we look to apply to a segment based on its ranking. So those first, top two are pretty good. Anything above 80, we're in pretty good shape. 85 and above, we minor patch and do some crack sealing. If you're 80 to 84, we'll do thin overlays, that seal coat or the micro-surfacing. You start dropping below 80, we start looking at thicker overlays, milling overlays, spot repairs, and then overlays, reconstruction or in sections. And at some point, you just say, we're done doing maintenance, we're going to replace the whole thing. Does that answer your question?
It did. So my... So there really wouldn't be any surprises if anything was below a 50. I mean, you don't necessarily need a sensor or a... I mean, you pretty much know. You just validate it by having the pieces of equipment to go ahead and say, yeah, this really does need to have.
That's right. Now, we'll explore that a little bit here and also as well.
Monty?
Yes.
Sorry. On those categories of what needs to happen at which level, are those just based on our internal decisions about where we think?
Some of that's our decisions, but it's also in consultation with the people who develop this program and do this all over the country.
Okay.
It's a pretty powerful piece of software and a lot of work goes into it. So we like to take advantage of what their expertise and what's worked in other communities. Again, graphically, good, very good, fair, poor. Right here, you know, again, based on consultation with IMS people, is what we believe should be our target range of 74 to 79. Our current ranking, based on this recent survey, would put us at a 70. When we complete the fiscal year 17 pavement management program, that'll be back up to 73. So we're going back in the right direction.
But the target is 80.
74, 79, 80, somewhere in that neighborhood. Remember, the further you go up the curve, the more difficult and expensive it is. In the network, about 64% of the network is local streets. 16% are collectors, 17% are minor arterials, 4% are primary arterial. 18%, 85 to 100, and I'm sorry, that's about 16% is 80 to 84, so roughly a third of our pavements are in a good category. Another 25% roughly is in the 70 to 79 range, and then roughly another 25% are in the 60 to 69 range. Then the remainder are the 40 to 60. We don't have anything below 40, but we do have some getting into the low 40s. We wanted to show you what that looks like system-wide, but when we put the local streets on, you can't really read the map. So we eliminated the local streets and thought, just giving you the collectors and arterials would be good information. As you can see, the vast majority, this represents pretty good pavement, the vast majority of our arterials and collectors, which are these colors, are in pretty good shape. These would be ones we'd start doing preventive maintenance, some rehabilitation, these heavy rehabilitation, these we'd start reconstructing. And you'll see some of those next month when we talk about our next year's pavement management program. So what else did we learn? As I said, our average rank for the system is 70. Five years ago, it was 74, but they didn't... Five years ago, we didn't have the deflection testing, so it's kind of hard to compare those. It's a little bit of apples versus oranges. We've noticed that some of the streets have rated better with no maintenance work done to them, which is an indication that the sub-base and the sub-grades are in better shape than we might have anticipated, which is good news, which means we don't have to spend as much money on those. Again, after we complete the current pavement management project, we'll be to 73, which means we're in a little better shape. Pavements are in better shape than maybe the rank indicates, but what's hurting us is the ride quality, and that's what the public notices. It's what we all notice. And we've been told by our consultant that we are well below the norm in our ride quality. We'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute as well.
So just to clarify there, you're saying that structurally, the roads are in decent condition, but the ride quality on those is not as high as it should be for...
That's right.
Thanks.
And of course, that's what we judge it by.
Yeah.
And we'll talk a little bit about this statistical correction and how we use this data going forward. A street consists of several segments and rankings, or several blocks, excuse me. Each one of those is rated, and then they're averaged, and you come up with a rank. And then they do a standard deviation on that. If you have a very small standard deviation, that means the uniformity of those blocks, the range of those blocks is close. If it's a very wide standard deviation large, it means it varies greatly. So we could have a street with a ranking of 75, 80, and think... Two streets, both of them in that range, and think, well, those are pretty good. But one of them could have a standard deviation of two, which means it's good. The other one could have a standard deviation of 16, which would tell us that in those blocks, there's some segments that are in really bad shape. So if we don't look at that as well, we miss an opportunity to catch things. And a quick example, 12th Avenue from Western to Main, there's 44 blocks. It's got a rank of 93, which makes it one of our better pavements. Forty of those blocks rank 85 to 100. Three of them rank 80 to 84, all very good. We've got one that's 70 to 79. So if we just look and say, hey, 12th from Western to Main is in great shape, we're not going to worry about it, we've missed that one block. And missing that one block can really cause us problems down the road, because once it starts going bad, you start letting water in that one spot, pavement gets bad, it keeps growing, it's like a cancer. So we're appreciative of that breakdown that lets us look at those as well. Back to the ride quality. So it's partly due to the soils that we have in Stillwater. Anybody that has seen their house go up and down, up and down through the years, understands we do shrink and swell. Some of it's the past materials and designs and the construction techniques from years ago, and economics plays into that. Many of us can remember back to the '60s and '70s that Western from 6th to Farm Road was 20 feet wide and was what was called an all-mat street, and they literally took oil, mixed it with soil, and that was the pavement. And a good part of our streets were paved that way. And so through the '60s, '70s, and '80s, there was a major effort to get pavement down in the community, both in residential areas and on arterials. You know, money wasn't even freer then than it is now, and folks were trying to stretch that as far as they could. We also know more now than we knew then, and we've made improvements not only in our materials and design, but also in construction techniques. So going forward, or currently what we do is, to address some of this ride quality, particularly the rutting, is on our pavement management projects, we specify a higher quality asphalt. It's only been developed in the last probably five, six, seven years. It's got additives to it, which helps limit the rutting and makes that not as bad. And going forward in the future, you know, we'd obviously continue to do that, but we don't really have anything in our standards that requires that on our new construction. So that's something that we need to look at. And certainly in developments, that will increase the cost of development, so that's a discussion to be had with lots of people before we would bring that back to you. But that would be something that we would think would be prudent to investigate.
Monty?
Yes?
Real quick, sorry to interrupt. What, real quick, what is the difference between concrete and asphalt?
Well, they're both... Actually, they're both asphalt. They're both concrete. One is technically called asphalt concrete, and then there's Portland cement concrete.
Okay.
And basically, you take aggregates, put some kind of glue with it, and the glue's either asphalt or it's Portland cement. So Portland cement concrete is what we typically call. More importantly, Portland cement concrete is a rigid pavement, and so that when you drive over it, it acts like a beam, and it spreads the stresses out uniformly underneath it. Asphalt concrete is what we call a flexible pavement, which bends a little bit more, and the load is more like a triangle when it comes down. So it's the way they behave differently. And with asphalt concrete, you have the surface cores that you understand is going to wear faster, it's also going to oxidize faster, and it's kind of a sacrificial layer that you know you're going to have to come back and replace. But the cost of that is supposed, in the long run, makes it economical. The other thing we like about this program is that we have access to a really powerful piece of software. It's a wonderful tool. Once we determine, or as we're developing a maintenance program, we can run various scenarios, determine what the new system average ranking were, if we do this to this street, this to this street, this technique, what does that do? It lets us optimize our dollars. For instance, we looked at one scenario where it looked like, you know, the ideal overlay would be three inches of asphalt on top of an existing street, and it gave you a pretty nice ranking. So then it was, okay, well, what happens if you did two inches? Well, you only lost a point. So now the question is, is that extra one inch worth one rating point? And probably not. So going forward, it'll allow us to kind of run those a little bit better, optimize again how well we're spending those monies. We can also combine that information with a life cycle analysis to determine whether our overlays should be the standard two-inch or the standard mill and put some type of asphalt concrete overlay, or do a thing called white topping, which is a Portland cement concrete overlay. What you do in those instances, you come in, you mill off four, five, six inches of asphalt, and then you come back with a rigid concrete pavement. When you do that, you've probably picked up 25 to 30 years of life with very minimal additional expense. To that, it's more expensive. So then you do the life cycle cost analysis. You save yourself two to three milling overlay cycles, and so is that cheaper in the long run? Look at ride quality, those types of things. You also look into things such as inconvenience to the public, and those things are kind of hard to quantify, but you know, obviously, if we're going to put down... Do concrete, we've closed that road much longer than if we're milling overlay. But milling overlay is an inconvenience to the public as well. And so going in the future, how much overlay is that? I mean, how much of an inconvenience is that? That also involves, what do you think the average daily traffic's going to be, those types of things. As we learned last summer, there is a limit as to when the public really gets upset with how many streets we have lost.
Yes, there is.
It was kind of... It was kind of a unique situation, but we heard from lots of folks. So all that goes into that mix. We think there are some streets that are very good candidates to look at that, and we hope to pursue that as well. That kind of concludes the pavement management. If anybody's got any questions they want before we move on, or we can hold those to the end, whichever way you want to do it.
I certainly will never ride on a street and take it for granted.
Well, we appreciate that.
I can't, also, I could overlook, I'm 66. I think I need a base reconstruction and more than a thin overlay.
My knees share that view as well. I think this asset data collection for the signage and pavement management was a very wise decision. We now have a database that we believe has all the signs that's going to make, I don't know if it's going to make life easier for our operations people or not, but we now know the sign type, the condition, the size, obstructions that are in front of those signs, the support type, the condition of the support type, a GPS coordinate on each one, how many signs are on a particular support, more data than you'd like to know.
Does it include all the entering and leaving Stillwater signs?
Yes, 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 we have...
We know where all those are?
Yep, we have. We believe there's 8,141 signs. I think the important thing put on this sign is how many of them are in good condition, and how many of them are in poor condition. The poor condition represents less than 5 tenths of 1% are in poor condition. I think this gives us very good information in case there's an incident that happens and somebody questions whether a sign was there, whether the condition of that sign. We now have a database, and as the guys go out and replace them, they update the database, and it gives us very good data to address whether the question is legitimate or not. Within those signs, there's 5,100 of them that are subject to what we call the retro reflectivity condition assessment. You will be glad to know that entering and leaving Stillwater signs do not fall into that category, so we don't care if you can be seen at night. We do care if you can...
If there's a thousand of them?
Unfortunately, no. The no parking signs, we don't really, aren't as concerned about them. We are concerned that you see stop signs, stop ahead signs, speed limit signs, curve ahead signs, those type of signs. So there's 5,100 of those. And again, the vast majority of those, about 63% of them are in good shape. We've got just under 100 of them that are in good shape, which can, or they're partially obstructed, because of either bushes, trees, another sign perhaps, various reasons. 600 of them are in fair condition, 600 of them need to replace, be replaced. It's very cremation, it lets us sit down with operations and say, okay, is this something you guys can do in-house, or is this something that we need to request special money for and do as a maintenance project, and get it all done at once? And what's the best way to get this done? And now, it gives us something that we can quantify as we move forward.
So those are separate rankings from the first ones you showed?
This is a subset of the other sets.
So they could be in good overall condition, but in fair or replaced condition from a reflectivity standpoint?
Yes, 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 that's correct. If we go to pavement marking lines, we've got about 1 and 1/2 million lineal feet of pavement marking. It's split about equally between yellow and white lines. For thermal plastic, the average cost of thermal plastic is $1.65 for a four-inch wide strip. So that means you've got about $2.5 million worth of pavement striping. The next slide is going to give you about $100,000 worth of symbols as well. I don't, I think it's fair to say that, you know, we've heard from numerous people that our pavement markings aren't up to snuff, and we've kind of theorized about how many lineal feet we had, when I figured we had a million, just sitting down and calculating on the back of an envelope. And in that million, we were including crosswalks. That 1 and 1/2 million does not include crosswalks, so we've got something more than that. Thermal plastic on concrete, our experience is that lasts about three years. On asphalt, it lasts maybe six years. We don't yet know how much is on asphalt and how much is on concrete. The data is there, it's just not easily to get, have to sit down and analyze that. But I think it's fair to say that if we stayed with thermal plastic, we would need to budget $500,000 to $600,000 a year just to take care of the pavement markings. At that rate, it'd take us three years to get them up to shape, and then it'd take us, or three to six years to get them up to shape, and it'd take us that long to keep them going. Excuse me. So that means there's other things we need to look at. We know that there's other products, a paint product that's epoxy that works really, really well on concrete. Perhaps we go to that for concrete, not thermal plastic. I don't know what the life of that is, but we would look at that. I know it's very expensive, but we'd have to do that analysis. Maybe we go back and just say, hey, we're going to paint, go back to the old style, and we're just going to paint them every 12 to 18 months and forget about some things. Do we continue to try and contract it, or do we gear up in operations and do those things? Those are discussions that we've kind of had tentatively, but we've never had really good data to know how much we have something to do. And now we have that, and it gives us an opportunity to go for it. So all in all, that's the report. We think we've got some very good data. We think it's going to let us use it wisely in the future to optimize how we spend our dollars, and more than happy to answer any additional questions.
Counselors, questions?
Well, I think, sort of, I love the fact that we have this data. I think the ability to collect it and to maintain the data that we have is just essential for being able to make the decisions, which sounds like we're really kind of getting to the point where we can do that very well. I guess my big overall question is, what is, from a dollar standpoint, say we get to 74, we're in the sweet spot we want to be in, from a dollar standpoint, what does it take to keep us there year in and year out?
Well, right now, we get, we project about $4 million a year from the half-cent sales tax dedicated to that. And we're not sure that, we think we can kind of keep where we are with them out. With some of this new data, we need to rethink some of those assumptions we've had in the past. But I think it's going to be very difficult at $4 million for us to move very far up that scale, very far up that line. How much more, I don't know that I can give you an answer, but we'll strive to get that.
Does that include the striping and the signage? Is that just pavement?
That's just the pavement, that's just the pavement, doesn't include the other. I will tell you that one of the goals I have, as you know, we're short a transportation engineer in the department. Hopefully, we're close to hiring one. But the first task when that individual's hired is to develop a five-year pavement management plan, and then we'll have a better handle on what it will take over a five-year period of time, and we can make some better budget decisions then.
Questions?
I have a question, just to thank you, because I mean, we always are asked about the roads and asked about, you know, I knew there was a plan, I knew there was a way that we figured this out. It's nice to have that clarification.
Could we have a pocket guide that we carry around that has all those facts and figures?
We'll be happy to, we'll be happy to give you one.
Facts and figures, I agree with everybody. The data that we are keeping now, numbers don't lie, they have to help. So glad that we made the decisions, that's what long-term planning is all about.
Yes.
Glad the decisions were made, and I'm glad we're following that.
You bet.
Thank you for your report.
You bet.
That brings to reports from officers and boards. City Attorney.
Couple of items tonight, ma'am. Request an executive session pursuant to 25OS subsection 307B-2 to discuss labor negotiations with the Internal Order of Police Lodge Number 102 and International Association of Firefighters Local 2095.
Thank you. City Manager.
Yes, ma'am, two items. Public input meetings have been set in March to gather ideas for the 2018 Community Development Block Grant. We are seeking public input on how to allocate the grant's federal funding for the benefit of people and incomes. In the past, you've seen this money used for drainage projects and that kind of thing in areas of town where that was needed. This next year is a park project. First meeting is Tuesday, March 6th, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the Community Center in Room 11. The second meeting is Tuesday, March 13th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. in the same location. And finally, Mayor, City Council will hold office hours tomorrow from 5:30 to 7 o'clock at the Aspen Coffee Shop at 1908 North Perkins Road.
Thank you. City Counselors, news. Counselors Zanotti.
You bet. If you're already thinking about your spring cleaning, please keep the city's spring household hazardous waste collection event in mind. Residents are encouraged to drop off household pollutants free of charge Saturday, April 28th, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00. If you have a question about that, you can throw it away. Please check the website. This is a wonderful opportunity to safely get rid of those hazardous pollutants that we keep, because we don't know what to do with them. So spring cleaning is on the way. So remember, Saturday, April 28th, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. If you have any questions about what items are accepted, contact the programs department prior to the event.
Thank you.
That would be dropped off at the convenience center, I think?
I might have to call to find out.
Yeah. Okay. Residents from several counties have been invited to Stillwater to attend a free storm spotter training and his presentation tomorrow night, Tuesday, February 13th. The training program will teach individuals about the National Weather Service, how to monitor the weather, and prepare for weather emergencies. The event is free, family-friendly, and open to the public. No registration is necessary, and that event will last from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. in the Community Free Houston Theater.
And the date on that one more time?
February 13th.
All right.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
So you can go to office hours and ask about the budget, and then you can go learn about being a storm spotter.
That's right. We could probably think of 50 other things to do today.
Counselor Joyce.
Yeah, now sign up to help pick up litter around town at this year's City of Stillwater Trash Off Event on Saturday, March 31st, from 9:00 a.m. to noon. Volunteers will meet at the Community Center to begin the event, and then hot dogs and drinks will be served at noon to close the event, and an award will be presented to the group that collects the most trash. For more information or to RSVP, you can contact the City's Manager, Chris Franks.
Thank you. And Counselor Woodley.
Yes, ma'am. The Stillwater Police Department is asking residents who have residential and/or commercial security cameras to consider participating in a voluntary private security camera registration program to help solve crimes and protect their neighborhoods. There is no financial cost, participants can opt out at any time. If you are interested, you may fill out a registration form at stillwater.org/vidcam.
Thank you. Okay, so right now, we are going to go to the other agendas. We'll come back to the executive session. Right now, I'm going to call the Stillwater Utilities Authority Meeting to Order. Trustees, is there anything on the consent docket that you would like more clarification, or is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the vote. And with a vote of five to zero, the consent docket is approved. Reports from officers and boards, General Counsel.
I think you report, ma'am.
General Manager.
No items, ma'am.
Trustees.
No items.
Is there...
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the Stillwater Utilities Authority Meeting. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the meeting is adjourned. That takes us, and I have yours, to the next item, which is, Stillwater Economic Development Authority Meeting. I'm going to call that meeting to order. And trustees, is there anything on the consent docket you would like to have clarified, or is there a motion?
Yes, ma'am, I'd like to, item C on the consent docket, the Visit Stillwater Semi-Annual Report, just a couple comments and a couple questions.
Pull that one. Is there a motion to approve items A and B? Am I doing that right, Mr. Dorman? Okay.
Motion to approve items A and B on the consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion to approve items A and B on the consent docket, please vote. With a five, items A and B on the consent docket are approved, and then we will go to item number four, which is items removed from the consent docket. Counselors Zanotti, item C, Visit Stillwater Semi-Annual Report.
Yes, for those that do reports, I always like to recognize the fact that you've spent time and effort doing these reports, and so I did let Kristi Morrison of Visit Stillwater know that I had a couple comments and some questions, and so never want to catch anyone off guard, because it's just not a good feeling to be in. So she kind of already knows what my thought process is. But first, I want to say thank you, it is always very good to get those reports, and appreciate the time and effort spent on them. But the two questions I had, one was, I saw about the Winter Wonderland, and saw the reports, and just kind of wanted some feedback. We'd heard all about it prior to the event. Christmas happened, we're already in February, and so I just, I thought it'd be good for the public to know a little bit about what your thoughts were, what went well, challenges.
Sure.
If we're going to do it this next year.
Ironically, it's full of advice for 22 years, how to run a successful, trouble-free event, so for the first time, we took our own advice, and it worked out pretty well, so that's always good to know. We were extremely pleased. Realistically, we were hoping for about 7,500 people. When you look at the other markets where there's ice rinks, and the size of the market, the pull from the pie in the sky number was 10,000, but we knew that was probably us being just us. We were extremely excited that just about 8,800 people skated on the ice rink. Also, yeah, it was actually amazing. Our friend Dimitri, who built the rink, said in his links that this was by far the most weather-challenged year or season he's ever had. And I think that we can all attest for that, it was either way too warm, or it was way too cold, and I think we still did extremely well. So I'm very pleased with that. You'll also see at the bottom our other attractions that were part of the Winter Wonderland event, the reindeer chop in Poughkeepsie, they all did extremely well as far as attendance goes. We've had a wrap-up meeting with every single one of them. They all very much want to partner with us again, so hopefully it's something that we can do again. We have definitely looked at hours of operation and days of the week, about what worked and what didn't. Those who know me well know that I have an amazing affection for Excel. And so we literally have every single day, we have the temperature for that day, we have the attendance for that day, the day of the week, where the attendance was during the day the most. So I think that we'll be able to really use that data to have even a better event, hopefully at the end of this year. So we're very excited, really well financially. We, you know, when you're asking people to sponsor an event or ask for marketing partners, you really can't do that without investing yourself as well. So the Visit Stillwater Board invested $25,000 with that money, and with the ticket sales, with the sponsorships, it's basically a net even at the end of the event. So that was very, very good news for us, a first-year event, that's typically not the case. So we're very excited that it ended that way for us, and hopefully it will be even better for everybody. I know the city financially, from just a cash deficit and water and sales tax was, what is it, about almost $8,000? And so hopefully, when the sales tax numbers come in for December, that we're really excited about, hopefully we'll see some bump there, because when you have 41% of all of those attendees originating from outside of Stillwater, who've gone shopping to eat, to go to a convenience store, so hopefully there was also other revenue that was generated as a result.
Thank you. I have a wonderful, from where I live, could see, and it was just, it was neat to see that on a daily basis, and I'm impressed that people went out when it was as cold as it was.
I know.
And it just speaks volumes, so congratulations on that.
Thank you. A team effort, lots of people helped make that happen.
Absolutely. Absolutely. The other question or clarification, I, I really appreciated, I think in the last report that you did, we kind of asked for you to do a breakdown of the budget, and you did that this time, and I appreciate the additional members and kind of helped us visually see kind of where things went and, and all of that.
Sure.
And I get this question, and I think other counselors have gotten the question too, is, you know, the, the value of Visit Stillwater and what, what does it do? And so as I was looking through things, I was looking at the different types of mid-year highlights and goals and meeting events and sales. And I saw this one that said, generate 60 hotel leads. And I was thinking, one of the things that we keep getting asked is, do we, are you bringing in? It's our, not our knowledge of knowing what it is like in your world. So I texted and said, what, what does this mean? Are you bringing more than, Krista said, no. So if you could explain that, that would be helpful.
Sure, yeah, you're right. Well, when you ask, I thought, I don't understand the question. But you're right, when you're in one world, another world may not understand the lingo. That does, trying to solicit 60 hotels into Stillwater. What a hotel lead is, is that those are different groups, anything from five rooms to 500 rooms, that we're sending that information onto hotels. We have this great customer relationship management software that allows us to push a button, send that to hotels at the same time. They have a week to respond to us. Then we have the ability to provide a report summary to our vendor meeting coordinator to say, here's all the hotels that have availability, here's what the rate is, here's the amenities that come with it. Then they have, at a very quick glance, makes it a lot easier for them than having to call 16... So that's what a hotel lead is, is those are leads that go directly, directly to our hotel partners.
See, when you explain it, that sounds great. I mean, that makes perfect sense, but in my mind, I was thinking, more hotels, so...
Definitely not.
It's those things, so I just, it's just nice to help get that clarification. So I appreciate you taking the time to...
We have finally had contact with the Spring Health Suites folks. Just to let you know, basically said, if, if we can get open by the end of April, we have pretty much, from graduation to Special Olympics to two weeks of NCAA golf championships, your property will do extremely well, particularly given your location, and we got a call. So we do, we do anticipate them being open in April. Yeah, it is, it's going good.
Well, thanks. I don't know if anyone else had any questions or comments.
Questions, trustees, anybody else?
I'm always interested in what we can do. You know, what, what, what the city can be doing to continue to further your mission and help you all out.
Well, I, I want to compliment John McClany and the city staff for rent permit. And they have asked for some input on that throughout their whole process, and I'm very, very excited about that. I totally understand where the city is coming from on that. I totally understand that Visit Stillwater can help recoup some of those costs, because if they're events that are truly going to bring visitors into town, we do have grants available for that. So really, it's a true partnership, win-win situation to make sure that we can get groups to come in and stay here and grow. So I don't mean a big, John's not here, he's usually here, so don't tell him I complimented him.
Well, I think it also allows a clearer understanding for those individuals or entities that want to host something in Stillwater, that it's all in the same field as well, and there's no surprises.
Right, and you don't want to have to reinvent the wheel every single event. So it really makes a lot of sense. So big compliments, because I know that was a huge job.
Anything else? Thank you. All right, that brings...
I move to approve item C, Visit Stillwater Semiannual Report on the consent docket.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item C on the consent docket. Please vote. And with a vote of five to zero, item C is approved on the consent docket. That brings us towards General Counsel.
I think you report, ma'am.
General Manager.
No items, ma'am.
Trustees.
No items.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the Stillwater Economic Development Authority meeting. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the meeting is convened. The city council meeting, is there a motion to go into executive session?
Motion to go to executive session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to move into executive session. Please vote. And with a vote of five to zero, we have a session.